I'm going to start the meeting called order. We'll record attendance that all members are present with the exception of member Bruno, who is running a little late. At this point, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of nine states of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the current agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? At this point, I'd like to ask if anybody wants to disclose any conflicts of interest.
I have just one. I live on the street. That is the only public hearing we have. It's up to you. I was, I'm not close enough to have been noticed, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I don't think any of the members do.
No.
No, you're good. Okay. I see no conflict of interest. Thank you for mentioning that. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the January sixth, twenty twenty five meeting.
So.
Support.
Hey, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And Article six, we'd like to acknowledge any visitors wishing to speak. We do have a public hearing on the case for Whispering Ridge. So if you'd like to speak on something other than Whispering Ridge, then we're happy to give you some time. Is there anybody online? Okay. Then we'll go on to Article seven, case number twenty four dash three eight seven seven. Andrea, do you want to run through the?
Well, could you please tell them to this, the public hearing packet? The subject property of seventy three twenty Whispering Ridge Drive. The property is located in a residential neighborhood. The owner of the property would like to demolish the existing home. Rebuild another home and an accessory building over eight hundred and thirty two square feet, which is why we find this item before us today. This is an R one zone district. Now that we hash everything in the staff report.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And the packet, well, it's twelve, page twelve on the PDF, but it's actually page four in the packet. So I'm not sure. It's got two pictures of the home. One looks like it's maybe in the fall or early spring and ones in the summer. It looks like there's, is there a second driveway coming in? Yeah, there it is. Top picture. Is there a second driveway coming in there?
No, I think that's the house on the it. It's interesting because it's, that house has a cascade address.
Yeah.
And it's behind them, so it's not accessible. You can't get through there. They're, they're too, it, it doesn't come to this house, which is weird because it looks in the picture like it dead ends right into their yard, but it doesn't.
But to the right of the blue box, doesn't that look like there's a driveway or like a?
I see what you're saying.
You know?
Yeah.
I don't know. This is landscaping. If I'm thinking correctly, or at least the line of rivers, the forest.
Yeah.
That's also part of the other structure that's there. There's
Oh, that.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Yeah, but that's what that is. Okay. Okay. And so there's a driveway to that one. Okay. All right. And are they going to, so that's the existing structure. Okay. So, and I'll ask that question the app when they come up. Go into the setbacks a little bit because I was reading the packet and I, I was a little confused about the.
Yeah, so this is, if you see, we actually did do a property use verification because this property was not easy to determine a front yard, side yard, rear yard, one because of the irregular shape of the property, two because of kind of the angling off of the driveway, and then three because of riverfront property. So any waterfront property in the township, it doesn't necessarily make the waterfront side a front yard. It would just allow an applicant or a homeowner or property owner to build an accessory structure in the front yard. That's the way that our ordinance is written. So when it really came down to this parcel and what we could consider front yard, rear yard, side yard, there was a lot of discussion. It was actually when we were looking at rewriting the zoning. So.
But there was something, and I'm after, I'm glancing right now, but I thought there was something in there that said something about there was a
Close to the neighbor.
Yeah, the setbacks were not within. Like they were, like they were asked.
That they actually increased the setback from the neighbor to the north, which is the one in the picture. Because it is there is no front yard, I guess.
Right.
So that's was my understanding.
So the setbacks are within parameters. We're not making any exception to any of the setbacks.
There's no variance. Actually, the, if you look at, let's quick go back to that.
And that's what I was confused at when I read it. I was reading it and I'm like, I'm not getting it, so.
Yep. So if you look, the existing building, we don't actually have the exact setbacks of the existing building. On the site survey of the just showing the boundaries. But if you see the accessory building that exists there right now, thirty one feet from the northern setback. And the proposed setback for the new building will actually be an additional ten feet off of that property line.
Okay.
With that, efficient.
Yes, thank you.
Is what you were talking about directly to the right of the blue box? When you said, is that another driveway? I think that might be the current accessory though.
That's what it is. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I couldn't tell because it just kind of blended right in with the picture. Yeah, once you said it, I'm like, yep, I can see it now. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I have maybe two things.
Go ahead.
Um, one, just the address, just noted. I don't, I think our parcels are all associated with Whispering Ridge Drive, but I think our legal address is Whispering Ridge Street, some of these. I don't know whether that makes any big difference, but just to note that. The other thing is just because this is a partially two-story building with part of it being underground, I think that's something that we should really maybe talk about. I know historically, when we've talked about two stories, other buildings, accessory buildings, maybe like a a boathouse, I think, once came to us that we did want to include the second story in the total square footage. And I think that's, for me, that's one of the biggest hangups I have is having it being two stories, not really including or not knowing whether we're going to include that second, the underground store or underground area square footage. I think that's something that we definitely want to clarify in our zoning changes that we're looking at doing because to me this historically, I believe the planning commission has turned down second story structures when the second story sub square footage has been included, even if the main footprint exceeds the square footage allowable, which this one would still, just the main footprint of it.
Yeah.
But I don't think we've allowed that second piece of the square footage to come into play as well, meaning we, we denied that piece of it. We approved it with conditions not to allow a second story. So I think that's something that we might want to talk about and consider if we're going to consider approving it, whether or not we want to allow the underground section as well.
Yeah.
Because personally, I think that's the, the part I have the biggest problem with. It's not the, the building itself. It's the, okay, and then we're also going to add below ground, well, kind of like a walkout.
Should we talk about that during discussion after we've heard from the applicant? Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a good point. I like it. I just. Any questions for staff?
No. No, but I, I think it's nice to kind of voice some of those concerns like that ahead of time. I know being in these things on behalf of an applicant from time to time, it's like you get up and you present your thing and then people start talking. We start talking after the fact and they don't really have a chance to address our concerns. So I think it's helpful to say something like that, like, hey, I have kind of an issue about this, maybe why, or, and then allow the applicant to address it when they present.
Does anybody have any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, if the applicant like to come up, we'd tell us your name and address. And tell us a little bit about the project and then if anybody has any questions.
Sure. I'm Jason Inglesma with Inglesma Homes. The property address is seventy three twenty Whispering Springs Drive. And I'm representing the homeowner in this case. I don't know that I have a ton to add to what's been already shown as far as the project itself. I think Andrea laid out clearly what their intentions are for some store. It's basically a storage structure that's larger than what it currently allows. Similar ones have been approved in the past as far as size. Maybe a couple notes or thoughts on what you brought up about the under storage. So the, the, the last project that we built out that was approved by the planning commission also had additional second level space, open space on the plan. So that was just a note that there, there was one in the past that was approved.
Is that a river?
It was not a river. No, it wasn't a river. It was on Butrick. So, and then I think the other conversations I've had with other township as well, usually what they're using as the guideline for preventing this from being a multi-story structure is their overall roof height. Because the overall roof height, how you've described it to the average height, it has to be designed so that you couldn't have a big open foundation on this, nor could you have a second level that was a full second level because of that height restriction. So it seems to me that you're using your height restriction to kind of limit how much people can have for accessible space in the lower level as well as really building out a full second level. And then the final note I would have on it would be, is that spaces is really not considered, I mean, it's floor space, it is usable space down there, but it's a concrete tube. So it's basically, it's going to have concrete in the top. All four walls will be concrete. It'll have a concrete floor. You know, it's a lower ceiling height, probably eight foot at max because of the drop down of the concrete. And it's strictly in a storage area down there. Think that's all I have unless there's any questions other for me.
The bath is strictly half bath, not full bath?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, I think that's, I know where you're going. That's what I'm worried about with the lower level.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions for the applicant. Does anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, take a motion to go to public hearing.
Make a motion to open public. They're opening up the public hearing right now.
Yeah, yeah. So we're opening up. Yep. Wait, hold on. We have a motion. You can come up, but.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm Ron Stasilovskis. My wife and I live next door.
What's your address?
Seven, seventy three thirty four Whispering Ridge. We've forty six years.
We just need it for the record. That's all, sir.
Okay. In, in general, I don't like accessory buildings. If that's needed here, they're allowed, I guess. This one doesn't look too bad when I've looked over the plans. It's not really too bad. And it's in a place I can't see it too much, but I don't know, having two, something that looks like almost a small, small house on the same property is going to be good for, for us next door or not. It's well done maybe, but it's still two buildings, a casita next door. You never know what, once you put one up, you never know what its use is going to be in the future, even if people that are there originally take well care of it, you know, since I can't worry about that too much. I'm a little older. The will it have a negative effect on our property? I don't know if it's well done. The house, I think the, the plan that I saw a couple of days ago, looks like you're approving the changes to the house as well as to the to the barn.
No, you can.
Okay, they're in the same packet. So show a larger house.
Sure, but that's not what the request is.
Yeah, they're, they're showing that so that we see where the barn is in relation to the house.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Okay. I heard from the previous owners that they're going to, the owner that is going to build there, is going to put in a golf simulator?
In the garage. Yep.
In the garage, yeah. Is that going to be noisy or how are they going to take care of the noise? You know, whack, whack, whack. If that's that kind of a simulator, you, you can hit a hundred golf balls, you know. Whack, whack, whack. We got a line of sight to the building.
Address it to us, not to.
Okay, we've got a line of sight to the building.
Yep.
From three rooms, bathroom and two bedrooms.
That's a great point.
So, you know, if it's, if it'd be there's, is there room to get rid of it later? Because if it's noisy, consider the noisier and something to, you know, an annoyance. Okay, and another question. There's, there's trees now between us. And there's going to be very little room now with the expanded house. We're going to have a whole series of pine trees between two houses. I don't think that's very good for fire protection, you know, if they catch fire and you know how a pine tree can hold. So, but they're there. There are, to me, there are forty five foot tall fence. Which you can't build an eight foot, six foot fence, but you can put up a forty five foot fence of trees. Doesn't make sense. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. And anybody else on public hearing? Anybody on Zoom or online? All right, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close a public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, so I'm not a landscaper or an architect, so there are things about this that other people are more expert in clearly. But to me, and I know that we already discussed the irregularity of the lot shape and the you know, maybe unusualness of a cul-de-sac that's also on the river, that's also has a house facing a different direction and all of those things. But the first thing I think of in this specific scenario is to me, when you're driving up to a house, that's the front yard. And this is an accessory building that according to my interpretation of the drawing, is going to be in the front yard. And to me, that's I wouldn't, I mean, I don't know what the rules are going to be when we get through all of this. But to me, just based on that, I would not approve it if it were up to me, an accessory building in someone's front yard.
I'm just want to make him know of something. I think, and I don't, I live on the street, but I don't live on the river. I think to most people who live on waterfront, their front yard is their waterfront.
Typically, yeah.
And so I think, and, and I think in the past, historically, there's been some issues with people wanting to put accessory buildings on the river side of their home because the people who live there don't want to look out their main, what they think of as their front and see. So I think that that's why this is considered their backyard in this circumstance is because of that.
That's a good point. And I admit, I don't understand all of those things. I don't live on the river, so.
Yeah, so I just think compared to their neighbors, their neighbor would rather have it somewhere else versus on the riverside.
Okay. Yeah, to your point. But also one quick more. We did hear from someone that feels as though he's going to be looking at it on that.
Yeah.
Because of where it would be. In a negative way. Like I, I felt like he doesn't want to see it there.
Right. Okay.
I, I was just going to say, I don't know how you've handled those historically in the past, but and I haven't been to this location, but I understand a general reluctance to say have accessory buildings and what others see as a front yard. This just to me seems like kind of a unique location. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac. It's in a regular lot. I don't see like anybody driving past a quote unquote, front of this house at all. I mean, the cul-de-sac kind of ends at it. And so I, I just don't really see if we're talking about, well, we don't want to promote accessory buildings in a front yard. I mean, I, I, I understand that, but don't see it, I guess neatly applying to this particular property. At least in terms of those, some of those concerns.
May I make a quick point from our ordinance? Our ordinance, if this, if this was a structure that was eight hundred and thirty two square feet or smaller, this would be a buy right structure in the front yard. So our ordinance does allow, this is actually where this, this structure is allowed per our ordinance.
If it was eight hundred and thirty two or less.
Yeah, it would just be by, by right. This wouldn't be at the planning commission and it would be approved based on the fact that it meets the requirements of our ordinance.
So I have a question and, and more at the, at the builder. Why aren't you building the new structure in the exact same location? It seems to me that that's a nice tucked back into the trees location. Now you're getting bigger and moving it closer to the house. I mean, if it's an accessory building, then you know, putting it way back in the corner where it was, tucking it into the trees, that'll shade potentially sound issues and maybe even visual issues from the neighbors.
Yeah, that's based on the, um, once we take away the existing structure, the township setbacks are forty feet for the building. So that's why we would put it closer if that was an option. But that other building is closer than forty feet, so it's grandfathered in, I think.
So I think it's the height because that is a smaller structure. It's only required to be ten feet.
So it's a very, it, it changes when you go for a different, when it's a different height building.
So explain that to me, Andrea. So forty feet, I mean, it, forty feet from the because the, because.
This north line here, I think there's probably point of clarification is that I think Chairman Roland is speaking about moving the building to the east in the existing forest line.
Right.
Because that's where
That's where the existing building is, right. Where that hundred and fourteen feet, you've got there, move it along that line and tuck it back another where the, where the existing building was. I can, I hope I can. No, I can't push it.
I'm toggling. Oh, yeah, I'm at least toggling back and forth between the existing structure and the proposed structure.
And that line goes right there. I just, if you push that.
No.
So, so yeah, if you move, if you move that building back along that one fourteen line, it'll tuck it back into those woods a little bit more.
In, in this case, what would, what that would happen is, is actually would require significantly more tree removal. Because the structure is growing and so the, the, the line of the woods is basically following kind of that dotted line that you see going through there. And so it would be from a grading and, you know, affecting of the trees and whatnot, it would be more impactful to go further over that way. And, and the grade actually falls off significantly there. That existing structure.
Yeah, with the two, I'm looking in the blue.
That, if you see how that dotted line comes through that existing structure? And then on the next picture, if you look at where the dotted line is go to the other one second.
That's.
That structure that there's now on the backside is kind of like built suspended over that ravine that's going back there. So it's kind of like perched out on that.
Yeah, it is, it is a hard sight to kind of wrap your head around without you know, being on it.
Sure, please, sir.
Yeah, come on up to the bike.
We, we record everything, so we gotta.
We're there from the start. It was originally put by the first builder as a playhouse for his girls, two children. And then later, the next owner came along. He expanded it. I don't know if it was legally expanded or not, but so it, it started out as one thing and it turned to another like these things always do, right?
Yeah.
I have just a couple of things.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kind of just comments. When we talk about building height, I think we're looking at the height of the building from a certain point, not where the second driveway stall goes under, because if we measured height from down there up to the top, I'm assuming we'd be over the, the requirement as well, or the allowable, which I think is an interesting situation because.
So it's not, it's not measured from that actual minimum floor height. It's an average of the two heights. So if you look at, I don't know if children on here, but the drawings we have with the plan, we actually did a calculation.
Okay.
Andrea, is that?
Is that accurate? Because I don't think we've ever, I, I think, I think is being, from being on the planning commission, I think our our interpretation of the height is so that it doesn't pose too large of a structure to the neighbors, to people's view, to certain things. So to hear that it's an average height of the building is very interesting because it's obviously much higher.
Andrea can probably speak to that, but I called for that clarification as we were trying to put this together to understand it. And that's the clarification that she had given me.
So we do, so we have a lot of, you know, we have land that's hilly.
Right.
And we have to take that land, average it out, and you take the average of the hill. And that's within the ordinance. I can't remember right off the top of my mind, but it was one of those things that we're like, oh, maybe we should put this in our list as well.
We should.
Of items to look at. So following the ordinance, we did.
So you're saying because the back of the structure is lower, it really is not as high as it would seem, even though the total, like the actual height.
We see the line on there. I mean, you have, but you can see where measuring to is below the
Below the feet because that's the average.
If you look at the grade at the garage door, you can see where we're measuring is actually down below the grade of the garage door by a foot and a half. Because that's taking the average points of all the way around, including those low points bringing that in, it'd be average.
So if, you know, we can always, if there's some concern about that, because I didn't go in and measure every single elevation, we can always make sure that we condition that in the approval, so that when we do the final grading plans.
Other part I didn't realize is it's to the midpoint, the roof, meaning midway down the slope.
Yeah, it's always a point of rough, I know it's. How big's the lot?
One point two acres, I believe.
One point six.
One point six acre.
Okay. I did some quick math just for the group. The lower level is one thousand two hundred and twenty four square feet. The upper level is nine hundred and forty five square feet. The total square footage is two thousand one hundred and sixty nine square feet. I mean, one point six acre lot. So that's more than double the eight twenty five, what's the, is it eight twenty?
Eight thirty two.
Eight thirty two, more than double the eight thirty two. Just.
So I have a question. Just because. Sorry.
I was just going to ask which way the does the lower level garage door face the north property line?
Which would mean there would have to come more trees down than I would assume to be able to drive around that way to get in.
Well, yeah, where's the driveway showing to get in there?
Yeah, because the east side of it is the side where he said he couldn't move it further because. Yeah, cause the east side of it is the side where he said he couldn't move it further because of the, it would take more trees, but that's the driveway to get in, especially. I don't know, I'm kind of assuming that's gonna be where the boat goes down below, just cause it's only.
Yeah, it, it, yeah.
So you gotta have room to turn your boat into there, too.
They're not getting boat down there. There won't be a boat going down there. It it's a storage thing, there's a door there to get stuff in and out, but I I don't, that's not gonna be, there's there's no speedway to put a boat in there.
Based on your calculations, right? I just, I wanna go back to your thing, cause this says that it's a footprint of tw- tw- one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. And you had mentioned one thousand twenty-two, does that not include the the covered porch?
Oh, it probably doesn't. I just, yeah, it doesn't include the coverage, yeah, so.
That's correct.
So that's even more.
So the footprint's a little bit more. That that's where our calculations, we kinda have to clear them up.
What was the covered porch, three hundred and fifty?
Um, uh, the total was one, two, two, eight.
Okay.
Which included the half bath, bath and the hundred and thirty square foot porch.
Okay.
I I have a question for staff. Having not really seen this process unfold, we try to articulate this. So I gather that some of the concern from my fellow members is, well, this looks really nice as it is and we approve it. And once we approve it, though, you kinda lose control over it. Um, and I've heard some concern then too about this lower level garage door, for lack of a better term. You know, as it's drawn and presented, there's no drive going to that or anything. And so not having a full grasp of the ordinance, you know, say we approve this as it is, then is it a case where they can go back in there, cut out tons of trees, build a extra drive to access that without any reel over? I mean, th- they could do that more or less automatically?
Unfortunately, in a residential lot, that is the case. We do not have any impervious surface. We we do, well, no, we don't, we have a thirty-five percent lot coverage requirement. However, we don't calculate impervious surface driveways, um that type of patios in our calculation of that thirty-five percent cou- lot coverage.
Is there any restriction on multiple branches coming off a driveway?
Nope.
But we do have restrictions on multiple driveways.
Okay.
We don't, we don't want like two or three driveways coming in, right?
But you can have as many driveways once you get in there to go to wherever you want.
That's correct.
Branches, right?
Good.
Uh, I I I'll be honest, I got, I have a problem with the two levels. I have a problem with the size. I think if you guys did one level at twelve hundred square feet, I'd be like, okay. But two levels at almost over, almost twenty-two hundred square feet, I mean, I mean, that's the size of a lot of houses here in Cascade. I I think that's I I just, you have, you have a, I think the house has a, let me look, a house has what, a three-car garage or a two-car garage, plus you've got another three-car garage, plus you've got a storage downstairs. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's a bit much. I'll be honest. I I'm gonna have a hard prob- hard time approving or or voting positively on this. I'm just telling.
Right, and I think seeing larger accessory buildings, it's for a a home that's already there, and they're looking to, they need more storage of some sort, and they're looking to add some sort of storage to it. Um, at least my experience, that's all we've ever seen. I don't think we've seen one where we have a brand-new build, pretty much.
There's boathouses, we've done two stories, and obviously the first story is the boat driving in and out. And there was another one, I think we did on a two-story um thought.
The reference in in the packet, I believe there was one just north of here on Cascade Road, that we actually did approve a mezzanine, and we hadn't kind of clarified that floor area versus footprint. So I held to the seventeen hundred square foot.
Which was the.
Uh, we didn't say, yeah, which was in, well, I said the floor area, and I calculated.
One other question, um, you referenced one that had been approved that was two-story. Was that in the same district or was it in?
I believe that was A R C or R, yeah.
I, it was like, you know, in that, one of the, one of the little lakes back there, kind of behind um Meyer was one of those. I thought I remember it was, I I'd have, I'd have to go through my notes, but.
I'm not personally familiar with it. I did include the um list in in the packet, but I wasn't, I didn't have my hands on it, so it's hard for me to recall.
Yes, Rob.
Um, three quick comments or questions. Um, I still believe that each case that we review is a case-by-case basis, and we're not really looking at these so-called precedents. So, anyway, uh, moving on from that, we as residential areas are allowed to move their driveways, is that correct? Like if you decided I wanna move my driveway ten feet to the right or the east, we don't need approval for moving a driveway.
I think they do it, you know, they they can move it.
No.
So, I'm not sure, I'm not super familiar with with Spring Ridge, I have to admit. But from Google Maps and from the pictures here, this looks like a not a harbor or lagoon or anything. It looks almost like a pond sort of in the middle here. So there's no access to the river from that or anything like that, right?
No, and that isn't, I think that's noted in here, too. That's an E P A protected.
But their property does go into that, and if they wanted to move the driveway farther east to access the garage doors on this new accessory building, that would be okay, correct?
Like, well, actually, you make a good point, Wendy. We don't regulate those those driveways, but Eagle does. So there are certain areas that you can't build driveways, uh, without looking at the exact delineation of the pond and the wetlands. I can't tell you exactly where it is, but there's definitely some restrictions there.
I'm just imagining a scenario where they completely change the shape of their dri- cause their driveway seems to go right alongside of the neighbor's house here, and they could theoretically, after building this new accessory building, move the driveway a lot closer to the
Mm-hmm.
pond, I guess you'd say.
Yeah, or if they didn't move the whole driveway, they could keep the entrance in and do a circly circular driveway that would go like you said, around that even both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Keep in mind that that dotted line that's coming through there is a significant ridge. So the grading off that dotted line is dropping either pond thirty or forty feet down that hill. So there's not, there may be a little bit of adjustment inside of the dotted line to drive to the adjustment, but not usual that the driver can be able to adjust to pass that down.
What, what do we think of the footprint square footage? I think that we've talked about the.
I'm getting, I get, you know, Rob, talking about precedents, it just got me rolling, like, I just, you know, I'm thinking we this is gonna be a problem. People are gonna see this and they're gonna say, sweet, I can get two stories now.
Agreed. And 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 I think that's my question, like, personally, I don't love the two-story. I think it looks more like an agricultural barn, especially from the view with the second story underneath. I I don't, I I won't vote for two stories for the additional square footage for that. Um, but then I guess my question is, with what Rob said about looking at each case individually, how do we feel about the footprint square footage if it was a single story?
Well, I I that was one of the two questions I was actually just composed to the rest of the the commission. Uh, one, just on the size of the building in relation to the house and lot. Um, I mean, to me, just the look of it and looking at these numbers, it doesn't offend me personally, so. Um, I, you know, I I I see there are some percentages put down here. I just was wondering if anybody had any thoughts or feelings. I'm like, well, yeah, this is too big compared to the size of this house, or what what your concern is with that? I mean.
Yeah, I.
I, I, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just think back to what you originally said, but looking at each one individually. Based on our current zoning, it doesn't matter the size of the home, it matters where the hu- where these structures are being built. And in this district, our residential district, this is larger than what at some point was agreed upon for an accessory building. So I think that's the problem I have is that, you know, we don't want people putting barns in their backyard in our residential neighborhoods. We want storage buildings are allowable to a certain point. And I think just by looking at this from certain angles, this looks like a a a rules-style barn to me that seems way too large for a residential area, so.
So, uh, to me, it does look more like a pole barn or something like that, something that you would see like uh heading toward Lowell, maybe where they have like a ten-acre property. And in this neighborhood, like, I feel like it's much more residential than it is agricultural. I mean, it's it's houses, it's not the open farms. And I feel like, just from my point of view, like, I feel like everyone that comes in front of us starts naming up precedent, even though, again, I don't think that's what we're doing. But every time we approve something, that just goes onto the list of the next person's they keep coming at us with these so-called precedents. And I feel like we ought to clarify that constantly, that it's irrelevant. Um, but since no one feels that it is irrelevant, each one of these approvals becomes another problem for the future. That's my, I guess, emotional opinion on it.
Does anybody have an opinion, um, if we went to a single level? Does anybody have an opinion on approximate square footage that they would feel comfortable with on a single level?
Um, eight thirty-six?
I mean, I I I was thinking twelve hundred, but I, you know, I I.
As a footprint.
Yeah, as a total footprint for a single level.
I I agree, only because we did not hear from a lot of immediate neighbors that would be seeing this. We did hear from you. Um, and I think I would hope by lowering the square footage some, not having a lower level, maybe it wouldn't be as dramatic of a building.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Rob.
I mean, we did only hear from one person, right? And that person, I think, was trying to be polite and calm and nice as a neighbor. But what he said to me was three negative points about this. He doesn't want that. And from the admitted noise that it's gonna cause, the this is the neighbor that it most affects visually, it's worth what I can see on the map. I mean, we've heard, and we didn't hear from other neighbors saying, go for it, like, this won't bother us at all.
That's a really good point.
We heard from one neighbor, the neighbor, that it affects the most, and he doesn't want it. He he didn't voice it strongly, maybe because he's more polite than I'm being, but like, I feel like he doesn't want it. And we have to at least respect the one person that bothered to show up on this snowy day.
So do I, do I hear a motion um on to approve or not approve based on how it currently sits? I mean, I think you've heard some feedback. Um, so.
I present a motion to disapprove this, the way it currently sits.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Sorry, motion doesn't pass.
So, I guess Andrea, when I talked to Andrea about this, um, the understanding was that, can I, at least I make a proposal to do it without the lower level?
Uh, as long, uh.
I think we would need to see site plan with the driveway, too.
So I had asked, I'm sorry, I had asked um Andrea about this going in, cause she said this may be a concern, and I said, uh, can we ask at the same meeting to have uh, you know, approval based on not having the lower level?
Um, so just the top level at the nine hundred and forty-five square feet?
Correct.
I'm okay with that. If we, I mean, Andrea, can we, nine hundred, oh, plus the mezzanine or whatever, so.
I thought it was safe to.
I think what she's, she's class, Andrew is classifying square footage based on your definition of floor space, right?
The.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just like, I'm just working.
There's floor area.
Yeah.
And then we have footprint. The if I'm looking at this, I'm going to make a determination that it's floor area based on our zoning ordinance. But the motion that was drafted here, which the planning committee, they don't have to do anything that I suggest, was suggested that they could choose one or the other. However, the planning commission, you know, can choose to do whatever they'd like on this case. It's at their discretion.
Do you, are you guys, okay, then let me, then can I open it up? And are you guys okay with approving just the top level, which is, and that's my fault. When I ran the numbers, I think I looked at just the barn numbers and I didn't do the the porch and the bath numbers. What is the total square footage of the top floor?
Are we talking about floor or footprint?
Uh, the total, including bath and porch and everything, total.
Believe the footprint, that's what I would say is thirteen fifty-eight, plus that the calculation that was put in there doesn't include, I believe it's like ten by thirteen, so it is an additional hundred and thirty square feet, give or take. Thirteen fifty-eight, yeah, oh, that is, it's thirteen fifty-eight.
Is the total.
Is the total, yes.
And the twelve twenty-eight is the without the porch, right?
Yeah.
And and really, it's it's probably a little less than that, cause it's, if you do a hundred and ten or ten feet by thirteen feet is the
Small porch area.
But it's actually thirteen feet and eleven inches, so it's actually a little smaller than that.
All right, so thirteen fifty-eight is the total, if you, if you don't include the porch.
If you do include the porch.
If you do include the porch, right, thirteen fifty.
Approximately, it's not as big as twelve twenty-eight, it's a little less, cause it's twelve twenty-eight would be if it was a ten by thirteen, and it's ten by thirteen.
And twelve twenty-eight would be if you don't include the porch.
It'd be a little less than that.
Close, okay. All right, so discussion on that. I mean, do, wh- what is, what do you guys feel comfortable with? Honestly, I I still kinda think thirteen fifty-eight's a little big, but um.
Oh, maybe you, this looks like the neighbor wanted to come out.
Yeah, we can.
You should look at it, it's still twenty-five feet at tall.
Uh, i- it's eighteen at the midline, yes.
Line, all the rest of it, the rest of the road, it's twenty-five feet.
Unfortunately, that's.
You got a question, sir? So, uh, you said you would see the structure from a few rooms of your house, did you say that? Which rooms, again?
Uh, two bedrooms and a bathroom. It's like, we would, we're up in front of it a little bit, far as the river, so we look this way to it.
Okay, thank you.
The neighbor in attendance, your address is seventy-three thirty-four, correct? Okay. So there's the contours. Proposed structure would be here, there's trees lined here, and this is the neighbor's home. So this line of sight would be here. However, I do believe that there's landscaping in this space here. Sorry, we never told you that. There's a toggle button. You can see everything that I'm doing. So this is the the neighbor to the south.
Yeah.
This is a line of trees. This is the proposed, this is about the approximate location of the proposed structure.
Okay. Well.
So the trees are there now. They may not be there once they're done building a new set of buildings back there. And also, it's hard for me to see uh the neighbor's house clearly through the map I'm looking at, but to me, it appears that the house.
Switch to the different view, to the view she's looking at, you might be able to get a better look, um, bar right button.
Yeah. Right, so I mean, minus those pine trees, like, everything on this property is like something that they are constantly viewing. Yeah, so I I don't know, without like a totally different site proposal. Like, I'm not. Gonna. Imagine what might or might not end up happening, so I'd still disapprove anything that we're talking about at this point. Unless we have other pictures like an alternate. Plan, but I'm just looking at what's in the packet. Rather than my imagination.
At thirteen fifty-eight, uh, eighteen eight thirty-two is without permit, right? Thirteen fifty-eight, that's five hundred and twenty-six. Difference. So, I mean, I know, I I'd like to give them something. I I just don't know if. Thirteen fifty-eight is.
Well, I mean, they can come back with a different proposal in the future. I mean, I know we're trying to be nice, but we don't have to give them anything.
I, yeah. In reality, our job is to get what was presented to us and then there are.
We also have.
There's conditions that specific that we could add that we could do that, but.
Yeah, I would like to see like a new packet with like new, a new mock-up, I guess, whatever you want to call it, rather than. Me listening to the numbers and trying to picture it.
Okay.
You had mentioned twelve hundred. I mean, can we look at twelve hundred?
Me?
I meant, I mentioned twelve. I I. In the interest of. I I don't know, I I would put out twelve hundred if if. Or we can have them re-present and not have them. If they re-present, they don't have to. Add additional money to. Yeah, it's just time, right?
Well. The request. As. Proposed was denied.
Right.
So. I'm actually, I, we do have our legal.
Okay.
Um, on and she could. Run through our ordinance. We do talk about reapplying, so there has to be some substantial differences, and I think if you deny a request. You do need to pay again. Based on our ordinance.
Is there anything we can do on that?
So I would, I'll defer to Laura. We just denied this request, Laura.
Hi, everyone. This is Laura Genovich. Yes, if there's, you know, anything more than a minor change, it's it's going to need to be a new. Application, unfortunately.
Do we have the ability to say something here and now, or it's already been denied, so we at this point have? I mean, it's done and and we have to move on, or at this point can we? Come back with a different number?
Well, if you've just denied now, and I apologize, I I somehow still had seven o'clock on my on my calendar, so I apologize that I was late in joining today. I mean, if there's been a motion to deny it passed, you could still, I suppose reconsider that decision um at tonight's meeting if you wished. If it's a matter of denying it with a suggestion to the applicant, then the applicant could, um, you know, reapply with that in mind.
No, I I mean, my application wasn't necessarily, there were suggestions, but there wasn't. Two pieces to the application.
Is there any? Feeling. On the, I know Rob, Rob, I know you're, but are there, is there any other feeling on the other two uh commission members on? Twelve hundred square feet, or are we just, hey, we denied it and they've got to come back to something?
I I agree with Rob. In the sense that I think we, I think we denied it as it was. Set for. I think that in order to. Re-look at it or to take that back and start over again, we would have to be able to approve it with all of the information in the packet that we received. Um, with just additional conditions. I don't think that as a planning commission, we're here to negotiate with applicants. And I think that historically that's been a problem. I think we are given a packet of information. We have given. We're given the ability to approve it with some conditions if we choose to. And I think based on all of the things that we have discussed, being the two stories. Um, this total square footage, even as a single story, is too much for us to look at. In is just a condition. And I think based on that, I think that the applicant would need to reapply. I think what you're trying to ask legal counsel is if we could waive the application fee. Um, for a second application, just because. It's the same building. We've already kind of looked at it. I think that's what you were trying to ask as well.
Yeah.
So I I think we need the answer to that, or I think you would like the answer to that. Um, and then my feeling for it is that the way this is presented to us currently, we. We denied. If the applicant wants to come back to us with some of the. The things that we have talked about that we don't like.
Right.
Um, with a, you know. Renderings that also include. Access to that back point, if there will be um a driveway access to the front and back of it, I guess, because we don't really have.
But we're not gonna allow the second level, so there is.
That's very true.
Yeah.
Very true.
Right, so.
So, uh, you know, that's my opinion on it.
I appreciate the comments of everybody. I I um. It it's interesting. My reaction's a little different, right? This, the size of this footprint doesn't really offend me in relation to the size of. The house. I I realize. What the ordinance says, my my guess is it was drafted when houses were smaller as well. So the big question to me is really this, is it's, I think it's kind of a loose term on if we find that this has, you know, adverse impact on the. Surrounding area, uh, residents on on the surrounding area. I don't know, that that's kind of hard for me. I I I. But it's helpful for me to hear what everybody else is saying, why you view this as potentially negative. Um, I also though think that it's, we should do our best to the applicant to try to give him some guidance, and maybe everybody feels we've already done that. Right, that, hey, we've told you what we don't like about it. I don't think it's really fair to just say like, well, we're, we don't like it, we're denying it and just try again and. Figure, you know, may maybe you'll you'll have better luck next time. Um, so I I would encourage the other members to to try to give some guidance um to the best you can. On what you would hope to see in a new application. Um, again. To to me, the. The overall size doesn't doesn't really bother me. As it's drawn, so you're probably looking for some feedback from some folks other than me.
So we don't like the two levels. Four thirteen fifty-eight's too big, and I think to appease the neighbor, maybe some some trees on uh the the. What's that, what?
South.
South side. Yeah, the the property line side to kind of. Hide the structure or at least camouflage it as best so that you don't bother his view. I think that's the feedback I would have for you.
I agree. May may I make some clarification about driveway and. When we approve a special use, we are approving the site plan associated. With that special use. So if we require trees. As part of. The standards to approve. A structure, then. An applicant doesn't have the right to just do whatever they want and leave that structure. Is it hard to enforce as things move from property to property? Absolutely. Um, but. It is something that. Can be approved as part of a site plan. I just want to clarify that.
And I don't think we were requiring trees. I think we were saying. You put those trees in, it helps the neighbor with their view, it agrees the wheels with us. So.
I I think it's been helpful. I appreciate your comments about direction. Is there, like, along those lines, is there a number that? If you are looking for, and I'm asking that, but I think I know about that on December eight thirty-two. Um, but is there a number that, and I've heard twelve hundred from you?
I I agree with the twelve hundred-ish.
That's helpful. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm, we're trying to work with you. So. Okay, um. Thank you. Uh, alright, Article eight, uh, annual report draft from the planning department.
This has been a fun one. I will go as far into detail as this as you'd like. Um, I I hope you had some time to review it. Um, this is an annual review that comes before the planning commission. Annually, um, it's it's my first.
Thank you for coming.
It's the first time that I've been here. I know that Scott, this will be your first time seeing an annual review, Commissioner Kramer. It'll be your first time. Um, however, the rest of you have been around for a few of these, so this is similar to what um has been presented in the past. Um, however, I did want to, you know, highlight, this kind of has just high level, what we've been working on, master plan, zoning ordinance. This is a piece that the planning commission hasn't necessarily been part of, but hotel licensing. Has been a huge part of the planning department's. Um, work in the last, you know. Pretty much the whole year. This was adopted um. In May, and we have been working interdepartmentally to just make sure that. All departments are in on this, that all the applications are user-friendly. Uh, and that everything goes smoothly as we. Either as we um. Give out hotel licenses, so that licenses in for all sixteen licenses in the grand, or hotels in the. Township, we are looking at most of these likely being issued. Um, and in January, uh, end of January of this year. Um, boards and commissions, this is something you're you're familiar with seeing. Uh, nothing too crazy um in the department. Um, you can see that the amount of reviews that we've done is kind of consistent, a little bit more on the high end with what. Cascade is usually looking at annually. However, um, and this is. You have typically had your. Planning and zoning reviews, things that have came to the planning commission. Zoning Board of Appeals or just planning department review, however, we've taken this. Kind of. Into the process and added in. The other reviews that we do that aren't necessarily formal planning commission reviews, so that the planning. Commission, I'm sorry, planning department reviews, so that the planning commission kind of understands day to day what we're looking at. So, um. When we do have a house come in, we do have a sign. Um, come into the building department, the building department gives that to the planning. Department to review first for setbacks, height. Material, you know, allowed uses, all of those things, just to make sure that they don't have. That they meet all of our standards and that they don't have other. Formal reviews that need to be required or that are required, and some of the items that came to you this year have been things that. Maybe started in the building department and we realized, oh, no, you're gonna need a formal review. Um, so. We get things lots of ways and through the building department is one, and we've really worked at. Building that relationship and making sure that. Development in the township. You know, has planning's hands on it from the point that they, you know, either split a lot or ask for a building permit all the way until. Um, that building is done and they're asking for final. Um, approval from the building department, and that brings us to some of the work that we're working on and just making sure that we've. We've actually implemented a final zoning review, so not only. Do we look at um plans, but we actually do a final inspection. Um, when we get our, you know, feet on the ground, make sure we're counting plans, we're. You know, not always, you know, measuring everything perfectly, but just making sure that what. Is two D becomes three D, um, and that we're. You know, involved in that process. We know that that's important. Um, we keyed on a couple other. Items that we're working on and then included what's traditionally been your packet, which is a. Development request on. Spreadsheet with all of the reviews. Uh, does planning commission have any questions? About the review?
We haven't had any complaints on the wormies, have we?
No, no, it's still, I I know that there's an annual. Review that has to be done there, and we're getting all of that kind of in here. Um, or into the V S N A system so that we can put. Reminders.
When you do the annual review, will you guys do a mailing again out to the neighbors to let them know?
Um, I can look at what was approved, um, and. For some reason, I don't think that was, I think it was any complaints that might have come in or talked about or considered, but I don't think it was to. West comment from the neighbors.
Just be interested to get them here and be like, hmm, you know, nothing, everything's good, right? Like, like, we hoped it would be. So.
I've I've, um. In different questions that have come up with with neighbors around there, that's come up. And no one has complained about them being.
Great.
A a bad neighbor. No one's complained about anything.
Fantastic.
Operating.
What is that?
Commercial composting.
Worm, so it's really.
It's out in the agriculture.
We all.
Agriculture area and.
Almost fell off our chairs, we heard it, but then it turned out to be really great.
Like.
It's not that agricultural as the fifty people that came here angry about it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean. Correct, knowing why it is agricultural, unfortunately. For the people that live right next to it. Over the last. Twenty years, like. They've built dozens of houses right next to it or right across from it.
Yeah.
It was a. Hot button issue.
I think Alan's point is right. When we, every single one of us first thought saw it, we had a perception in our mind and what we thought. And the more you learned and dug into it. It really was. You'll have to, you'll have to review it.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good one. So, does anybody else have any questions for Andrea on that?
No, I did like seeing those.
Yeah.
zoning board of appeal stuff and all of that added in here just.
Thank you.
To see the big picture, but no, thank you.
Uh, alright, uh, Article nine, acknowledging visitors and those wishing to speak. We have no visitors. Is there anybody online? Side's legal? No, okay. Article ten, other business. So this was something I wanted to throw out to the other commissioners. Of us kind of writing down, um, you know, if we're gonna be reviewing ordinances. Think we all need to kind of write down a list of. Things that we feel are important to us that that we should look at when we're doing these ordinances, you know, like fence height. Um, you know, trees. Uh, or some of the other ones, notifications, right?
Two stories.
Two stories, right? Boathouse, defining a boathouse versus an accessory building, right? And a boathouse is okay to have two stories. The accessory building isn't, right? Or s- or things of that nature, right? You know, um, no more than what, one and a half stories on Cascade Road, right? We've talked about these things. Um, I think Andrea's probably jotted them down, but I think we should. Make a list as well ourselves. And I don't know if, um. Just make a list, send it to Andrea, right? We don't want each other seeing what the list is. Um, and my thought is just make the list and she'll decide. If it's on. You know, what side is it on? Is it residential, is it commercial? Where's that fall? Or it's maybe just, hey. We really don't have anything, but let's keep an eye on this when we're going through that, so that when we're reviewing as a team that those ordinances, we have. You know, the top twenty, like, hey, guys, these are definitely things we need to keep an eye on. So. You just take some time over the next week or two, just. Get her your hot buttons.
So Chairman Roland, let me clarify, just, we had talked about holding the. February third meeting to discuss this. So we had kind of put down a deadline of the twenty-seventh. For your comments. Um, and then we'll take those and get you the packet out by the twenty-ninth so that we can compile all of those and the planning commission. Can see all of those. Um. At the third meeting, I think, you know, the. Roll, uh, Commissioner Roland, Chairman Roland's point was really, you know, we want to. Be able to make sure that this subcommittee knows. All of the hot button tickets that we've seen, obviously, um. Commissioner Kramer, you haven't been around long enough, but our other commissioners have seen a lot of this. Time and time again, and I. They've got more seniority than me on a lot of these things, so I don't want to miss anything. We did include in there. Um, Madison's original packet, uh, our list of items and then a draft memo from our previous planning director. Um, Brian Hillbrand, just, so that's the things that we know that we're aware of and then we're kind of adding to. When we bring in comments. I was just gonna say, um, to Scott that. You might not have experience with issues that have been seen on the planning commission, but I think just in other work, maybe there's some issues that you see maybe in other. Communities, and I think that it's fair for you to either send them to Andrea. Um, and maybe we already have them addressed in our stuff, but we don't expect you to go through and read first to say, oh, is this addressed in Cascades?
Um, and maybe we already have them addressed in our stuff, but we don't expect you to go through and read first to say, oh, is this addressed in Cascade stuff? I would prefer you to just send your stuff to Andrea for her to put on our list for us to look at.
Even just as a resident.
Yeah.
Or if you have friends or neighbors that are complaining about things, I mean, that's.
Yeah. Exactly.
Oh, when did you say that you wanted us to send these into you by?
The twenty seventh.
Twenty seven.
Believe that's a Monday, that that's one week from today.
It's Monday.
Right.
It's almost over.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
On other other issues?
Yeah.
But this is great, I think, by the way, but um I really like pedestrian walkways and pathways, and anytime we can make bridges and paths safer, I'm all for that. Uh, currently, though, many of you may have already noticed this, the new uh walkway on the west side of the bridge near the dam heading southbound, I guess you'd say, on Cascade Road. Um, you know, the walkway got bigger and the lane got smaller. So anyone that's like, because there's two lanes going south on Cascade Road in that direction.
Yeah.
Bridge. If there's anyone driving, you know, I don't know, a Hummer or something in that right lane, like you're gonna spark your mirrors together, like it's not wide enough anymore. So I don't know who we address this to.
Yeah, the project's not finished.
Okay.
So, and I don't know why like there should be some sort of warning sign or something ahead of.
Or repaint the line or something.
And I think part of the problem is just this time of year with the weather, they haven't been.
Yeah.
But I think um in March, I know, in March, the other side of the street will be completed, started and that side will be complete as well, and then they're gonna take the total of five lanes and divide it fairly among them.
As it's still on the to-do list.
It is.
Definitely not okay.
No, it it definitely.
So they're gonna expand the other side and then redraw the house.
All of the lanes is what's gonna end up happening.
Well, there's a left turn lane on the bridge.
Yeah, so there's five, there's five lanes in that section. So the idea is they're gonna widen the other side of the road as well with the barrier. And then they're gonna divide out whatever's left. It still fits M dot standards that is a the highway.
Why they do it that way instead of a separate pedestrian bridge? Because they were talking about doing a separate.
Well, because the reason is, is they're still within M dot standards, but then the hope is, is we cannot change speed limits on that road, that it will be a pinch point that will start reducing traffic speed through Cascade. So people won't be driving fifty, hour.
That's on my list.
Through the village that it will, which it it is already, like when they were working on it, it was definitely a pinch point and people were slowing down and driving slower through the village. So once it's all done, all the lines are repainted. The idea and the hope is that it will be a pinch point, is what they refer to it as, to slow traffic down to get people to slow down through the village.
Okay. I think they referred to that, just for a future reference, as like emergency High ninety six or whatever, like.
Well, that's the, yeah, if it is, it was a detour and emerging, and that's why the track, it's traffic is boosts so much in Cascade Road, because now people are just using the hate that.
There's been so many constructions on ninety six, people just use it.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
I'm cool with it being a pinch point, just once that line gets.
Yes, just a little more.
With the plane width, at least wide.
Yes. So we do have to maintain M dot standards, so it will, because a lot of people are complaining it's gonna be too narrow once it's all done. It'll still be up to M dot standards, but they will be fairly distributed against amongst its five lanes versus just the one right now that's really shrunk down.
I also have two other road-related things that I hope someone can address at some point. Where Cascade Road turns what used to be called Forty Fourth Street there, headed toward Lowell. Um, and where you can veer toward Whitneyville, which is a main road.
We've talked about that multiple times.
Um, it's just not okay the way that it currently is. I mean, I I know that Eric's looked at it and I'm not, you know, a load engineer or whatever, but just driving on it, no one slows down to thirty-five miles an hour to make that year to the right.
To the Whitneyville.
Right, and it's super dangerous. And then the second thing that I hope someone can address at some point is um heading southbound on Thorn Apple River at Sixtieth, to the I, our southern boundary. Almost all the traffic is turning right on to Sixtieth at that intersection.
The U.
Correct. So I know that we wouldn't necessarily need to make this as large as you know, Crayon to Leonard, but to make two lanes that can just turn right and have the Thorn Apple part that comes in that looks like it would be Sixtieth, looking at the map, have a stop sign.
Hmm.
Like that should be the traffic that stops. And Thorn Apple into Sixtieth should be able to continue on. Maybe you'd have to look at the map show.
I know, I know what you mean. I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
I wonder if that's something the road commissioner went to, a traffic study or something.
It's all, it's got both of those things, and you and I have talked about Whitneyville before. Both of those are Kent County, right? That's right, and that's, and I.
What do we do to like nudge them to look at it? Because they're both.
Set.
Fixable, seems like.
I mean, because coming from us, they're gonna be like, yeah, whatever, you're just a citizen, but coming from Grace.
Well, and I think even um Erica Jade can reach out to them and have them, I, because I'm assuming they'd have to do a traffic study.
Well, I think the first thing is to have Jade drive that. Because because the first time I drove it, and I've, I mean, not my work, not my work car, but in my other car, like, which can handle that, I was like, whoa.
You're talking about Whitneyville.
Are you talking about the?
Yeah.
They moved the line a little to try to make you feel a little bit.
Well, yeah, and then you you go and it dips and it bombs and it, it, dude, somebody's gonna kill them. You're right, somebody's gonna, and it's gonna be a teenager.
The first time that I drove it, I made that turn on to Whitneyville from Cascade, and like, what are these guys talking about? It's not a big deal. And then I turned around and was the person turning left and looked at how that car was like staring me right in my face as I whipped around that corner, so I agree.
It used to be, it was even worse before they moved that.
Oh, well, yeah.
When they first redid it, they painted the lines weird, so it used to be really bad, and now they tried to straighten the line out some because they, the road, they couldn't straighten, so they tried to straighten the line. It didn't help.
There's quite a bit of land there that could have been used or could be used in the future to make that work better. I I think.
Yeah.
Um, well, anyway, I I love all those things to be addressed.
Does anybody else have any other new business?
No.
All right, then, let's see, then Article eleven, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Meeting adjourned.